Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Barry?
Present.
Vestal?
Present.
Hite?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
McCormick is present.
Can I ask, we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Gibson called by the pledge by Alderman Yiel.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for an opportunity to live in a free country. We ask that you be with those who are cold or sick or hungry and guide them into a better life. Ladies and gyes, as we do about the business of the city, these things asking our name.
Motion made. To divide the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded for the approval of minutes of November 12 meeting on the motion.
Gibson?
There is a correction needs to be made, I think.
All right, state your correction.
What is it, Mayor?
Motion made and seconded, so we're...
I think it has to do with a...
Is it typo or...
Well, I don't know, they got Alderman moving and seconded his own motion, so let's see which one.
If we're referring to page three, that was, this was the draft that went out and it's been corrected.
Okay.
This one went out by mistake.
Because he was moving and seconded his own motion, okay.
Well, Alderman Yieling's used to that.
Only I can do that.
On the, assuming, I assume that that point is the one that Alderman Thomas was talking about and Ms. Whitby says that that's been corrected, that the proper mover and seconder was actually reflected in that distributed copy of the minutes.
Yes, sir.
So on the motion to accept and file the minutes, or approval of minutes is submitted.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yieling?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
So who did, who did second the motion?
On this particular... You want me to explain it, I will.
I can confidently say it was not I. We're, we're on the communications, do I have a blank in motion?
So moved?
And I think we need to pull out, I know I want to pull out five, I believe, let's see.
Be outnumbered, my pleasure.
Yeah, number five, and has there been another one submitted? This one is the unknown. Yeah, we'll...
It's not numbered, but I do have it.
Yeah, without objection, I assume this was brought in after the filing, after the close of business?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, we'll submit this communication from Terry Hartwick, President of the Chamber, as communication number six, and let me just mention again that we're, I know there's always exceptions and we usually permit the exceptions, but if at all possible in order for them to be numbered and entered into the sequence, close of business on council day is when we're asking the filing to be submitted. Do you not have number five?
I don't have number four, please.
I don't have four either, I think.
I just took four, what?
He's the only one that gets four.
You only get four?
Oh, that's the one we got in the mail.
Yeah, municipal health.
Four was mailed.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Did you get that one, Tony?
It's in the mail, it's in my...
Check's in the mail.
That, that number four, for those of you, it's in my packet, for those of you who don't have it, I understand it was mailed to you, it indicates that we moved to a class three, which is a rate increase. And we can, we can talk to Mr. Sisson about that, I assume that's what that is. Mr. Gibson, do you have one?
That's fine, I'll get it. I'm very much aware of it.
All right, on one through four, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yieling?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On number five, would you read my title?
Yes, sir, this is a letter from Keith Jones, Executive Director of Central Arkansas Transit, regarding proposing night work on the bridge and closing it from 8:00 PM until 6:00 AM.
Let's have a motion for acceptance and filing.
Accept and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and what this is, is it's asking us to consent to contractor's recommendation that the bridge be closed from 8 o'clock till 6 o'clock. Keith, you want to get up the microphone, I think you're here, aren't you? And I understand the contractors are here, and generally speaking, there's been some communication had by Main Street and several businesses have raised a concern. I think there is a modification of that, and I know I discussed that with you, it appears, and our chamber has expressed a desire to not begin that until February 1st, I'm a little, and I don't, Terry's going to talk to that in a second or two, I'm a little confused as to why February 1st rather than maybe middle of January, I know I think they're trying to, Riverfront Hilton is concerned a little bit about trying to modify that, and I think after the holidays is what I understood, and secondly, from 10 to 6. You want to comment on that and/or the contractor?
Yes, Mayor Keith Jones, Central Arkansas Transit, due with Representative Gilbert Central here with us tonight. The contract for the Main Street Bridge modification exclusive of the track, just modifying the bridge, the except track, is proposed to be completed in August of next year and is on schedule for that, but with just the lanes that are closing, one and two lanes at a time, as you know, the contractor has proposed to us since we started the contract that they feel like the project can be done quite a bit quicker and safer for both workers and automobiles if some work's done at night, and that would be done by closing the entire bridge at night from 8 o'clock at night till 6:00 in the morning. We have heard from Terry and the chamber and others, and the information just really got to the contractor today, and I don't think they've had a chance to really do the math on whether or not it would still be a zero cost or cost effective thing to do to do it for shorter hours and to not start it until January, February. What we've discussed with Terry tonight with the years and the council's agreement is to send us away to work on this in the next day or two with the chamber to see if we can have a letter of agreement on starting it, we would certainly like to, if we're going to do it, the benefits to be gained are by starting it as soon as possible, I think waiting until after Christmas and New Year's is certainly something feasible. February 1st, we would like to talk more about that and see if we can somehow speed that up, and that would give the contractor a day or two to do the math on whether or not doing it for six or eight hours at night would still, it would still pay them to do it instead of 10 hours at night.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that, you know, Terry and certainly want to acknowledge his tenure here at City Hall and so former Mayor Hartwick are now President of the Chamber, you want to comment?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, that's going to be all right with us, without a doubt, we've talked to several businesses, not only on this side of the river, but on the other side of the river, there was concerns about actually just being able to shut down that bridge during the, I guess, peak season would be the holiday season. I asked for February 1st, and then sometimes you ask for more than what you're going to get, but that was what we were looking at, is to make sure that the holiday season is taken care of and with what Keith and of course the contractor said, we'd be glad to stay on with them, see if there's a place that we can compromise for everyone's concerns.
Does anybody else care to comment on this right now? Because what I'm going to suggest to the council is that, you know, is that if we have some consent between the chamber and the contractor, you know, that then this council would essentially, without having to come back to the council, because our next meeting is not until December the 9th, that would consent to, essentially expressing our approval of that consented to agreement. In other words, all right, let me just say this then, there's a motion to accept and file, and I will take by a positive vote on that motion, that you're authorizing me to go ahead and authorize the closure of that bridge subject to an agreement that would be reflected in writing between the chamber and Central Arkansas Transit and/or through them, the contractor. On the motion?
Question. Is this closing the entire bridge or just one lane?
No, this is the entire bridge.
I'd be closing the entire bridge.
It would be during certain hours at night from, you know, it looks like perhaps 10 o'clock till 6 o'clock in the morning, and it would be beginning sometime after the holiday period.
And two of three, what, did I hear June earlier?
Well, they don't know right now, they're going to be, they're going to be taking a look at whether this would be beneficial at all, Alderman Dobbins.
Mayor, the document here says close from 8:00 PM until 6:00 AM, the entire bridge, so I think that's one point right there, are we suggesting a 10:00 PM or keeping it 8:00?
What we're saying by, what I'm suggesting is by your approval, you're essentially, we're essentially looking at a modification of that time period and whether or not a modification, both as to the starting and as to the hours, would be beneficial to the contractor and Central Arkansas Transit. We've got to remember, I think, what we're all driving for, and that is, you know, I think there's one or two months earlier completion if we're able to accommodate this move, and these folks would be out of there during what I would think would be, you know, the peak summer season when, you know, when it might be beneficial for all of them, for us, for all of us, including them, to be gone.
My only concern is I want to make sure we have one nice project that finished on time but has some problems that it's opening, I want to make sure whatever we do that we don't have any issues like that, though we may speed up the time by working at night, we don't want to leave any gaps in safety and make sure everything functions properly as it should, because we are, there are going to be passengers on this, so we want to make sure we do that and don't add any added risk by essentially doubling up on the workday.
Yeah, it would make works on safety easier, but there is an approved safe traffic management plan as the project stands now. Regardless of this, there will be a three day period sometime after the first year, probably over a weekend, and one weekday when the entire bridge will need to be closed because of where the concrete's being poured here on the north end, but we'll work with the city and the chamber on selecting that period, and then this is for the bridge, the track preparation bid only, we'll come back with a separate contract that starts sometime next year that will lay track in the streets and on the bridge, so there'll be additional track work or a lane closure on the bridge when that project starts, I don't want to leave you with the impression that if we get this thing through in June, that's the whole project and the street cars start running, there's still another track contract that comes, but if we shorten the time 20 or 40 days, that would lessen the inconvenience to the motors from this project.
Will the track and the electric overhead wires be done simultaneously?
Well, they're going to be done by the same contractor, whether they're out there working, it'll be done in the same lane closure plan, correct? You know, not exactly simultaneously, but it'll be done in sequence with the lane closure.
Well, I guess, I think by an affirmative vote, and let me just go ahead and ask for that, you know, at this point, that'd be subject to a letter agreement of understanding between the chamber and CATA, can I have, you call a roll on that, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yieling?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
So, you know, y'all see what you can work out and maximize getting your job done safely, I guess what you hear is that we're going to try to be as reasonable as we can in terms of, you know, quid pro quo and getting finished earlier with closing the bridge, I think it's in all of our interest to try to do that as quickly as possible, so, you know, let me know once y'all have an understanding and we'll put a stamp on.
Put it.
Thank you very much. Any other communication?
Did you want Mr. Hartwick's letter?
I'm going to take Mr. Hartwick's letter as communication number six, let's get a motion on acceptance and filing.
So moved.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yieling?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let's go to old business.
Resolution 02-140, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into negotiations related to the conveyance of certain property owned by the city known as the Big Rock Quarry and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Before I, before I ask for a vote on this, let me, let me just mention a few things that I want to underline to the council, and that is, you know, that obviously what I am asking to do, you know, in my mind, I have the authority to do already, to negotiate for the sale of a property and bring the sale to the city council. So, you know, I wanted to bring this up this way because, you know, I wanted to get an idea from the council, you know, whether, and this is basically what this resolution does, and that simply says that if, in the negotiations, and although it was responded to in the form of an RFP, I take that as just an opening door to sit down and negotiate with the Vinodas group who were responding, but in terms of what that RFP response was versus what I may be ultimately inclined to with collaboration with the council of bringing back to this council for a vote on, you know, the encumbrance or the transfer or, you know, some form thereof of that property, that still remains to be a very open decision to be made by the council, and perhaps with the exception of Alderman Dobbins, you know, all those, you know, will be here. So the only thing that an affirmative vote in my mind does, you know, is essentially says that if something is brought back in terms of development and it's something that we feel is beneficial for this community, then we will consider it in a serious and reasonable way. It's essentially, you know, a threshold issue of, am I going to oppose any kind of development for that property other than, you know, leaving it in its present state? Some call it natural, it's been natural for that way since the Second World War, but, you know, before that, obviously, it was a fairly intense construction site in terms of the operation of the mining. Now, let me, you know, just very briefly say why, you know, I very strongly support moving toward a residential development in that, and I know we all had different thoughts in our minds, you know, perhaps when we voted to have the city acquire it. It made a lot of sense because of Emerald Park and Burns Park and Riverfront Park or River Park, it's sort of in the middle of a really beautiful area, and there's no question about that. One of the things that I first became painfully aware of when I took office was in 1989, we were looking for a 1990 census, and the city grew very rapidly up until 1960, roughly 1960, when we topped out, I won't say topped out, when we ended that census with 58,000 in population. That 58,000 over the next two censuses in 1970 and 1980 grew to a little over 65,000, and then 1990 and 2000, we backed up to 62,000 and now 60,000 where we sit. This council and this community has invested very strongly in the urban area, and we've been successful in the McCain Mall area for commercial. We've been somewhat successful in the commercial area and growing on our periphery, but we have not been successful at all in terms of residential growth. When I arrived, we were somewhere a little over 18, close to 19% in our portion of the countywide penny. We top out now at about 16 and a half percent that, you know, continually continues to reduce our percentage of the countywide penny. You know, we did pass our sales tax, and that's beneficial because, you know, the commercial is much in advance of the residential. I don't know what we're going to do with the, with the city or the state turnback. I know if Amendment 3 had been adopted, we wouldn't have any state turnback. The expansion of the school district, our city boundary limits are not the same as the school district for many of us who may or may not be aware of that, and every development, for example, the money that we put into, you know, to Deluxe Video, which used to be Rank Video, and the effort for economic development of our own industrial park, all the value that goes there and by and large anything, you know, out in the mall mail direction, that value that is translated to property tax value goes to the Pulaski County School District, and it's well and good for them, but it's a challenge for our own school district. So the urban development, both residential and commercial, within our city limits and as we focused on downtown, to me, is a real important part of what we're trying to do. And I know that that's a beautiful piece of real estate, and in a true and perfect world, you know, leaving that natural is a real temptation. But I had some calculations done, I talked to the developer, and again, I just want to make sure everyone understands, this is an opening, an opening opportunity to tell me that I'm not wasting my time if this council votes in favor of it, and that is somewhere between 17, 18 million dollars in value that that development could put on the tax rolls. You know, you translate that into $150,000 roughly annually per year directly to the North Little Rock School District, and that's not speaking of the other residential development that that might help inspire. You heard two property owners that testified at a public hearing not two weeks or a month ago, I guess, that both own property down there and were strongly supporting that. You know, I think we all realize that sometimes there has to be a priming of the pump, and this is a terrific opportunity that I think that we could prime that pump, we could also maintain the integrity of the trail, and we could minimize any kind of visual concerns as I work in trying to come back to something that I think is reasonable for the council to consider. So, you know, all of that having been said, you know, that's the reason that I am strongly supporting trying to come up with something that can prime that pump, can begin adding value to the tax rolls, can begin adding market value, population to our community, and doing it a way that is all around beneficial and will minimize, you know, any of the aesthetic intrusions that, you know, that some people rightly, I think, have an opinion that they don't want to do. You know, now, if this city was sort of sliding itself on the voting attention in that direction, then I might also be a little reluctant, you know, but absent one or two communities, we probably have more parkland per population than virtually any city in the state, and we're strapped at taking care of that. So having said all that, you know, I would ask for the council's consideration, are there any other comments before I call for a vote? Floor's open.
Newsburg?
My main concern in this, in this whole process has been, to kind of echo your sentiments, and one thing is to maintain the integrity of the trail itself. My wife and I have, in fact, as late as yesterday, we used the river trail, it's, we have an opportunity of seven miles of park, length of park from downtown North Little Rock out to the dam site, it's a 14 mile round trip. We have, I think we have an opportunity to not only fill in the gaps and enhance the beauty of the trail as it is now, but even on out past Burns Park, we, I'd like to see if we do, if we do enter into agreement to develop the quarry, to take the revenue from the sale of the quarry and to use on enhancement, improvement, extension of the river trail itself, if we're going, if we're going, if we're going to allow development of that, and a lot of people use that, use that trail, in development of that, of that development out there, the bikers, the walkers, the runners are going to be competing for asphalt on that narrow road from what Pike Avenue roughly out to where, that's a mile, about a mile and a half down there, it's about a mile to where the trail starts up again. There's even gaps there in that little park down there out by the paternal order police hut that we could, we could take city services and enhance that trail there. So my whole concern in this is to maintain not only the integrity of the current trail, but to lengthen it, to improve it, to enhance it, and to give the people opportunity to use that trail, there's, like I said, there's four, there's seven miles of park that we can, that we can make available to residents of North Little Rock if we use the revenue from sale of this property in a proper manner. And I would, I would be willing to support development of this property out there with stipulation that we take the revenue and use it toward enhancement of that river trail.
And that may very well be a part, but let me in part respond to what you're saying, and that is that, you know, that we have actually, we went and have committed city resources and match money and our own money in developing the trail to the extent that it is right now, and I'd say roughly 75 to 80% of it is totally dedicated to non-vehicular traffic. There are three stretches that are right now sharing pedestrian or non-vehicular with vehicular uses, and we went to the Ice Tea folks again and asked for one or two of those stretches to work for grants. So our desire is, you know, regardless of what happens here, our desire is to ultimately have that trail totally separated, obviously something like this may very well expedite it, but, you know, but the enhancement and the completion of that trail will never slow down, it's going to always, there's always going to be effort behind it, and we may be able to accelerate it, that's something that I certainly would commit to do as we try to work through this if this resolution is adopted, is to work through stipulations like that. Did Alderman Yieling?
Well, I, you know, certainly, I'm for economic development and I'm for more people living in North Little Rock and any kind of business development which is going to bring people in here and increase the tax base and help everybody. I think you have to look at why was this land bought in the first place and what were the people told in 1998 of the reasons that we were buying this land? And at the time, none of that was that we're going to speculate and sell it to some developer to build some apartments or condos or houses or whatever. When it was done in 98, all that was talked about was that North Little Rock is finally linking the parks, they've linked everything all the way, about bicycle trails, about bridges over the river, and in the articles at the time, it was talked about, you know, maybe our kids can enjoy this, and, you know, and like in the editorial in the Arkansas Democrat Gazette on 8/6, and I won't read the whole thing, but I will read the last part, says, "Last week, when North Little Rock announced it had brought Big Rock Quarry for $350,000, the dream of a park, as long as the twin cities' riverfrontage got much closer to reality. This chain of parks would make a great gift to future generations in central Arkansas, and if the two cities will hurry, maybe even this generation. Wouldn't that be nice? Also, healthy, fun, and lovely to look at. Some investments are as good for the sow as they are for the city." That's the reason that this council and this government at the time bought those parks. And there's no doubt, you know, one of the gentlemen that spoke last time said, "Yeah, you can put it there and you can make a space to make sure the trail's still there where people can get by, but it won't be the same." And it won't be the same. There's no way it'll be the same. And there's plenty of land down there on the Vestal properties available, which is a much bigger, much bigger part of, piece of property to build a development such as this. And, you know, I won't get into the merits of how much has been asked to sell for or RFPs with one person responding and all that other kind of stuff, I'm just talking about $350,000 in taxpayers' money was spent in 1998 to buy this property for parks, and I could go read all these articles, but all, you know, every one of them, and nobody's disputing them, "Big Rock Quarry provides new link for chain of parks." I mean, it just keeps on going, and you know, yeah, it would be really nice, someone would really like to go in the middle of Burns Park and what if we just said, "Well, we're going to take about 40 acres in the middle of Burns Park and let somebody build a high-rise," I bet you we'd sell it tomorrow. And you're the, you know, and you'll be living right in there. Well, this is a perfect, I mean, it's a great place for development, but it's also a good place for parkland, and it's, but the government at the time said they were going to do with it, I mean, maybe not real specifically, but this is what was led everyone to believe, that this was going to be a park and it was going to connect these parks and bicycle trails and such, and I just believe, you know, I'm not going to be one of those that's, you know, like people say, "Well, you know, they'll say one thing and then do another." Well, I mean, that's what the people, the guy that sat in my seat before me, when he, when he did it, I'm sure that's what he was thinking about. It's $350,000 to buy it for a chain of parks and connect the parks.
Normally, I don't respond, I'm not going to try to respond to everyone, but I got to respond to that one because Alderman Yieling wasn't sitting on the council when he, when that took place, and I was, and I sponsored the legislation to acquire the, acquire that property, and I can tell you what was in my mind because I'm here, and what was in my mind was partly what you said is right, and that still remains in my mind, to continue to use that trail as a very active and vibrant part of our park system. But I can also tell you what was in my mind, and that was to utilize that real estate since we were acquiring it in a way that would be in the best interest of this community, and that this council would then decide that. So notwithstanding what those articles said, I can tell you what was in my mind, I can't tell you what was in other counsels. I can't tell you what was in other council members' minds. They can pretty well speak for themselves. But I do know that I was on the council and I was sitting in this seat, and that's what I know.
Well, I wanna respond back. I mean, that's fine. That's fine. But you didn't answer anything, whatever you said. You didn't say, I mean, why did, why did you wanna buy the, why did you wanna buy the land? You know, the mayor stated before the city council, he thought it fit like a glove, Boyle said. I mean, sure, it does feel like a glove for a park, and that's what people thought we were buying it for. And that's what I wasn't, that's right, I wasn't on the council and I'm thinking, "Well, that's gonna be nice." And it's gonna be part of the park. And now, we're gonna sell it to a developer?
I can tell you what was in my mind. And I can tell you what was in my mind was that we would develop it in a way that would be in the best interest of the community as decided by the council when we made that decision.
And I believe ya, but I tell you what, I don't think that anybody had in their mind that a developer was gonna build apartments on it. I mean, I don't, I just don't think that that was, I just don't think that that was something that was thought of.
Well, you're in terms of your opinion.
But here again, that's just my opinion and, you know, and you could say things change and we might wanna decide to do it, and that's fine too.
And the vote of this council will make that decision.
That's right. But that's just my opinion and that's my reasoning.
Well, I might consider it, but I'd like to know, I still like to do the feasibility study because if we built this thing and we sold this property, we built this thing and we, and we weren't feasibly able, financially able, to support our community, wasn't financially able to support this, it's gonna look bad for everybody. It would be a mistake. So, I think there is a way of caution. I'd like to find out if we, if this development, have you L R studied it and see if we could see if it even could support this development?
It's always a possibility as we try to go through this. I'm sure the developer and the potential investment, you know, would be very prudent in terms of what might or might not be sellable. I assume that's where you're going, Alderman? And that may very well be a part of anything that takes place prior to coming back and making recommendations to council.
I don't see where we can financially afford to develop that as a park. It's gonna take two half million dollars for us to run infrastructure out there, to clean it up. You know, and there's some safety hazards out there now for people that are using that facility. But that, you know, I, you know, I don't know about me, I don't know, have you used the park? Have you used the river trail?
You asking me a question?
Yeah, have you used it?
Sure, I don't see any money needs to be spent, needs to be left just like it is.
Alderman Gibson, then Alderman Dobbins.
I promised myself I wasn't gonna say anything. I sat here and my interest began in the property probably in the middle nineties with a group of American Indians who were highly interested in the property. We spent three years in working with them and trying to find some way, telling them all along that, you know, the first idea was a casino that someone came up and then obviously that was not feasible nor legal. And in working with them through even a series of powwows they had downtown, they were never able to put together the financial things to acquire the property. After meeting with them and exhausting all of that, because they had the same idea, they wanted to make an Indian nature trail through there and maybe some villages and stuff, but not anything, not the grandiose high-rise. I probably spent more time on that piece of property in those three years than a lot of people have. Yes, there are safety hazards out there. Yes, most of those have been removed. There's a lot of old equipment that was left out there. But, you know, there's safety hazards all over Burns Park also. They're small in degree and, but people realize they're there. There are people that will try to climb that side of that mountain out there, there are people who try to come off the top of it. We had to go along the top of it well before we bought the Big Rock Quarry and put a fence up to keep people from trying to rapple down off of the park on top of it. I was there. It was always my idea that a piece of property be bought to tie together the parks. It may not have been the mayor's idea, but it was my idea that we try to do that. And I hope that we continue to try to do that, is develop it. Try to go and look for some grant money from either the feds or somebody. Sure, if you're gonna make a large scale development out there, it's gonna cost two and a half million dollars. But can you imagine trying to ride a bicycle or walk that trail when you've got dump trucks, building material trucks and everything else that's gonna be going on for a year and a year and a half? So, we'll say, "We won't take them down River Road, we'll take them through Seventeenth Street." No, that's not gonna work either. There's only gonna be one way in and one way out. It's my true feelings that this piece of property needs to be kept as a park, work at some grants along some way, whether the Trail of Tears money or some of the other things, and develop it into a casual use facility, not a concert area, not an all-tale arena, but to develop it in that matter. And obviously, I'll vote no on this resolution.
Any other comments, Alderman Dobbins?
Mayor, everybody's giving their litneo, their relationship with the park. I can start in the seventies with it. That's where me and all our friends used to go ride our bike. It wasn't a park then and I don't even know it was quite legal even to do that. But we did that because it was fun, we got back there and you ride and you're okay. Then in the eighties, of course, with River View Park, a lot of parking went along there. A lot of, lot of, lot of fun, a lot of things that were good there. Now, in the nineties, we have the trail and the development. And here we are in two thousand and two, we're trying to decide on what will it look like for future generations. I look at it from this standpoint. One, there's no way, and I won't be here, now I'll be up in the legislature somewhere, but there's no way the original cost of selling it, four hundred thousand, would ever fly. I think that there would've been outcry from this public that, like, we never heard. I mean, you're talking about prime real estate. I'm looking at at least two-plus million dollars right there to even just, for whoever's gonna develop it, to buy it. Then, you look at the cost of the city keeping it and developing it as a park, whether it's casual use or otherwise. And that's an outlay, and we're already running a deficit in our parks department. I don't know if there's some budgetary problems or personnel problems that may need to be changed there. But in any event, I think it's still the responsibility of this council to look ahead and see what are the possibilities. And I don't know if this RFP is to, just having one person there as the right avenue. I think that should be sent back out for some re-bid or re-looking at or, and including in that, some maintaining all the nature trails and all that information that Alderman Hite gave us a listing of. But I do think we need to just go and take a look and see what else is out there and not just say no right now. Because this council, not the mayor, but this council will retain authority to enter into the contract if any sale of it. So, this is just an opportunity to go window shopping. And whoever sits in my seat and others will have that choice of saying no, and then that's it. And I would hope that if we do go into some venture that's not, shouldn't cost the city any money to do any more exploratory means of it, because I listen to both the residents of Ward Two, it's in Ward Two, some were forward and some were against it. But the problem, the thing we have to look at here is what's best for our city as we go forward. We gotta think bigger than just no. We gotta find something that we want our young people to say yes to, we wanna make sure that our residents have something to say yes to. And if this thing comes back and it's ugly, as one of my constituents told me, if it's ugly, it seems like the city's always going for ugly things. But if this thing comes back and it's just not conducive for everyone, then I think there's probably gonna be about a majority no vote on this council. And I'll pay close attention to that. But if it is, if it comes back and there's several options out there that make sense, that's workable, that we can get sales tax money to go to our school districts, I think that's important. I think we need to really look at that. And that's why I think we need to consider this in a favorable manner.
I agree. I agree. Alderman Thomas and then Alderman Vestal?
I guess the only question I was gonna ask, did we condemn, did we file condemnation proceedings to acquire that property?
The answer is yes, we filed condemnation, but ended up, there was a lease for like twenty-five years and, you know, we didn't wanna leave that to succeeding generations, particularly when property values accelerated. Council authorized me to file condemnation action on behalf of the city. We did that, but we ended up settling that prior to going to trial. So, the property's ours, all of it.
But we've bought it under the threat of condemnation.
That's correct. Actually, we filed suit if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. And, and you've satisfied that's legal, that we can take it from one seller to another?
You can use the threat of imminent, imminent domain to acquire property. If somebody was to have a problem with it, it would have to be the people you acquired it from at best. And if you take a look at it, that was a trust of like thirty-four people who, the reason we had to file the lawsuit is because you couldn't get them all to agree because you couldn't find them all.
But, but there's a question, you know, a year's passed, you could take that in and turn around, sell it to someone else.
I mean, that's one thing we can look at through the contract process. I haven't looked at it specifically, but I think a key element there is it was settled out of court and was never a jury verdict that forced the sale.
That's one part of it. The other part, Alderman, is that, you know, a portion of this real estate and a significant portion of it, you know, that we were arguing in terms of value, if my memory serves me, was the hillside on the far part of the quarry. So, a good section of that twenty-acre tract that we condemned, I'd say perhaps even the majority of it, you know, the city would always retain because of retaining the trail and the park aspects of it. So, you know, even though, you know, you raise a point that has some consideration, you know, I don't think that we're mandated to keep everything, even if we maintain a majority of it would be for the purpose that we condemned it. Alderman Vestal?
Um, Mayor, I was on this council in the early nineties when we, several members of this council, the mayor included and several members of the city board of Little Rock, took a trip to Portland, Oregon to view their riverside facilities and how they've redeveloped their downtown. And they have a lot of mixed use, residential and commercial, and it was very successful. And they have a trail system on one side of their river, similar to what we, what, I'm sure the mayor envisions here. And, but they had residential development that was fairly close to the trail system. It was right up against it, as a matter of fact. And there was no, there was, it was not a qualitative life issue with, I mean, every time, every day you went down there, there were thousands upon thousands of people utilizing that, great utilizing that riverside park and trail system that they had. And this is no more than allowing the mayor to negotiate for a project, basically. And in, as Alderman Dobbins stated, in no means does that encumber this council to approve whatever he decides to do. And because of those facts, I'm gonna vote in favor of this resolution.
I, I think I made the statement to the mayor several weeks ago. I spent some time in Cincinnati, Ohio this summer. Just recently returned from Bellingham, Washington via Seattle, Washington. And each time I've been to these cities, I've come back amazed at how they've utilized either the river frontage with, combined with residential and commercial establishments are, in Seattle's case, in Bellingham, Washington's case, how they've utilized the ocean shore and there's, and there's parks and there's homes and there's businesses all intertwined and intermingled. And I'm just amazed at how they, how they do that and then they draw, that draw people, that those locations are magnets to draw people to. And it all involves some type of construction. Each one, they've utilized the natural scenery, the natural beauty in the landscape and development of all those establishments. This is an opportunity for us to do the same thing along the Arkansas River in North Little Rock. And we can, we can, this is a chance for us to use one of our assets, allow one of our assets to be developed, to be a magnet for people to come to downtown North Little Rock and to the river system that we have here, that we are blessed with owning.
On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson. Yildin.
No.
Dobbins.
Yes.
Thomas.
No.
Berry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Next item?
Resolution oh-two-one-forty-four, Alderman Gibson.
I believe this is the sixth meeting, which means it will have to be.
Uh, the fifth meeting.
Fifth meeting.
Yes, sir.
Let's hold it one more meeting.
Go to ordinances.
Ordinance oh-two-seventy-two, Alderman Yildin.
Call it.
It's an ordinance requiring out-of-state persons or entities rental property, commercial, residential in the city to have a local registration before obtaining a privileged license. This is the third and final reading, it's amended.
Okay, uh, I have an amendment. Have a second. Been on the table.
Second.
Okay, let me explain the amendment. What this does, two things. It strikes the fine of twenty dollars a day from it that this should not be any different than any other fine for any, for non-payment of any other one. And so, those are points that were made and I agree wholeheartedly, it should just be the same. So, we're just gonna take that out. And then, the second part of this, well, instead of out-of-state, out-of-county landlord, that's something that we had had and it didn't make it in Alderman Vestal's and Berry's amendment. But if you lived out of the county, then you'd get a registered agent. So, the bottom line is there's no change in the law of anybody in the city, but if you're out of the county, then you would have to get a registered agent before you could get your privileged tax. Does nothing to the fines or anything, everything is just like it is. Nothing's changed. Do you have any questions?
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I got a couple of discussion items.
All right, on the amendment?
Gibson. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. On the amendment, Alderman Gibson, you have the floor.
I'm sorry. Nothing to do with the amount of the fine. Running the records, we have fourteen people who now pay a privileged tax outside of the county. Only five of those, and that includes the people who live in Conway, Greenbrier, McRae. If you take out, only nine, only five live outside of the adjacent counties and only three are out of state. My situation is that I'm not sure we need to have a person who has rental property in North Little Rock and leasing, lives in Mayflower, Greenbrier, require them to have to have a local agent. And that's my, that's, that's the question I have in regard to that portion.
You wanna substitute amendment?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how to put together a substitute.
So, what was the number, what was the totals again, out of county?
Fourteen totally outside the county, out of something close, Jerry's is close to two hundred on his list.
Yes.
Let me, let me just suggest that that amendment contains several parts to it, so I would suggest that we go ahead and deal with that amendment and then if we wanna do something subsequent to that, then we act on another amendment.
Okay, which would be an amendment to the amendment, is that correct?
Amendment to the amended document after it's.
Okay, so, I, okay, so to take out, to change the fine situation and to change it to out-of-state is what's on the table, correctly?
Right.
Okay. So, from out-of-state to out-of-county.
Yeah.
So, since, so in trying to develop a, I don't know of a proper amendment on trying to handle this. I mean, if you've got some, I mean, there's only, there's only five of them that live outside of the adjacent counties. Two of the, three of those are out of state, one's in Fort Smith and one's somewhere else up in, that you got Conway, I mean.
Have a question, city attorney, can we say adjoining counties?
I don't know. I'd wanna look that one up because what you wanna do is you wanna treat everybody as equally as possible. And if you get to out-of-counties, why would somebody in, you know, Hot Spring County be different than Parkland? So, I don't know. I, you know, want some time to research that one, Alderman.
What if you use a mile radius, like a fifty-mile radius? You think excessive fifty-mile radius?
Think you get into the same issue. So, if somebody lives on the east side of Cabot versus the west side of Cabot, why are we treating them different? Because one's fifty-one miles, one's forty-nine miles.
And Plaski County doesn't do that same thing? Or is that something that's recognized?
Well, it's because clearly you want, it would require them to have a registered agent here local, and if you live here local, you ought to be an agent, you know, you're here personally. So, it's treating everybody the same, this is the way it's written currently. Something we can look at if you'd like to do.
Uh, right now, we're on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Ms. Whitby on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Gibson will vote yes on that amendment.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins? Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion's amended, floor's open.
He's thinking.
I'm, I'm, I guess the only thing he's leaving me obviously to do is to, to, to go back to requiring it to be out-of-state rather than out-of-county, because if that's the only options we have, there's only, there's only three licenses that are out-of-state at present time. Uh, and, and there's only five that are, including those three, they're in adjacent counties. So, I guess my amendment's gonna be to strike out of county and replace it with out-of-state.
I'll second it.
All right, wait a minute, wait a minute. All right, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion on the motion to amend? You've got three owners that live out-of-state.
Got three that live out-of-state.
Of all the property that's being rented and leased in North Little Rock, only three of them live out-of-state.
Only three that are registered.
You gotta remember that a lot of...
Is that residential or commercial?
No, because in this case, they may have an office here. Like the McCain Mall properties, it belongs to someone out-of-state, but they have a, a local person, that's where they receive their mail.
So, is this residential or commercial?
This is, is this boat cherry? Residential.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do we have, who do we have the biggest problem with? Residential or commercial?
We don't have a big problem in many, we just got three or four.
We got more than three or four, they're just not doing it. Okay? I mean, looking at these numbers is not, is not a...
I simply is that just, just change the out-of-county and write it back to out-of-state in all instances.
And that's your motion?
That's my motion.
And there's a second. We're on the motion to amend. Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
No.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Motion's amended, floor's open.
We went back to out-of-state. I just got a question, now, I mean, if, so far, what we've done is gone back to basically the legislation that's already under the, on the books now. And the only thing different is now if you have, you're an out-of-state property, a rental owner, you have to register with, register right now. We know three that's confirmed, there may be others.
On residential, we don't know about all the commercials.
We don't know about commercials, we know there's three residential out there.
Right.
Okay, so, you're the sponsor of this, is this really the, the whole intent of this legislation? I mean...
Yes.
That's to keep what we have and just register out-of-state people?
Well, actually, it would've been nice to register people that are, that are in the, out of county, because, you know, that could be some of the problem too. It doesn't matter if you are in Fort Smith or wherever, you need to know someone who's gonna be an agent of, of service and to find them so we can get properties cleaned up and so they adhere to the codes like our local landlords do. So, I mean, I would like for it to be out-of-county or out of the central Arkansas area or that sort of thing. I mean, if we could, go up...
And, and I'm not, I'm trying to raise a point here, now that we have this, our stance now, you're out-of-state. And there's still no fine on there. So, what, what's the enforcement? What are we gonna do? How do we...
They're not gonna be able to get a privileged tax to operate without a registered agent.
So, are we gonna kick the people out of the house? That's, let's get down to what would really happen. You got a person out-of-state, they're in Texas. They got some rental property, uh, on Main Street or someplace, Popper Street. They, it's January one, two, three, whatever it is, I guess it's March thirtieth is when he must have it done, privileged tax?
Yes, March thirty-first.
So, it's March thirty-first, they don't have it, they got a family living in that house, do we kick the people out of the, out of the house because that owner of that property doesn't have their privileged license? What, what's the enforcement on it? What are our code enforcement people going to do? That's what I, I, I don't know. Someone, could someone help me on that? What, what do we do with this legislation? Are this just something that looks good?
It's gonna look real good.
Alderman, Thomas and Vestal?
I guess, I guess the only comment I had, I know that when it all began, I guess the first team or safe team or whatever the group is they call themselves, that asked for this, uh, I assume they're the ones that pushed for this, uh, we thought we had a real problem with those, uh, out of, out of state was the real reason for it, it's the reason that, I'm wondering if we really had a problem with it.
Well, we, we have a problem, because I've been in some of the houses, and I know, I've been to people's houses that have to live next door to them. So, don't tell me there's not a problem, because I've been out there in them, okay? And we will have something that we can do. I've got pictures of them, I wish I'd have brought them and put them on the TV here so everybody can see them, because it's bad. And when people tell me, I live out-of-state, Daddy lives out-of-state, I'm not gonna tell you where he lives. Daddy lives out-of-state, I'm not gonna tell you where he lives, I ain't gonna give you his address, I'm not gonna give you his phone number.
Alderman Vestal?
Uh, one, how are we going to locate, what is the process that we're going to go through to locate these out-of-state property owners? And how much is that gonna cost the city of North Little Rock?
I don't think there's a process necessary that we're gonna go through and start out tomorrow with three or four people trying to figure out how to locate these people. I think that it's gonna come up. We're gonna have a problem, we're gonna go, we're gonna, uh, code is probably gonna go to the house, and they're gonna find out that these people aren't registered, and then that's when the ticket can be given, and that's when, you know, procedures, you know, can, can be in place. I don't think it's something that is gonna be actively running around here and doing it, uh, just as if when Cross the River passed theirs, they didn't just start out trying to find out all this stuff, but when problems happen, then we have, say, you have to be registered and you gotta register your property, and we make them register, and then we have the information that we need in the future when we have problems. And that's what this is for.
I don't really have a problem with the legislation as it's written, as it, as it has been amended, um, 'cause what I'm, okay, what about if we took the approach of, when we have an out-of-state pro, out-of-state owner and we can't locate them, is there any way that we could charge that individual the cost of us finding them and serving them?
The administrative costs.
Mr. City Attorney?
It would de, depend on the nature of while we're trying to find them. If we're trying to find them to tell them that there's a fire and your house has burned down, no. For notifying them that, uh, there's, uh, you know, code violations, no. If we filed a lawsuit against them because there's a nuisance abatement, they got a drug house, which in way about twenty of those going this year, with those, you could, uh, get the court to assess those costs, and they have done so in the past. So, it depends on why you're trying to notify them. It's not just solely code violations, you're talking, if a house catches on fire, you gotta notify the person. If there's been a homicide or there's a fire risk, a variety of reasons why the, the city in authority would want to notify them. So, the cost, it depends on the reason you're trying to notify them. Obviously, if a house burns down, you're not gonna find them because you had to tell them, hey, your house burned down.
I'm just gonna play devil's advocate a little bit. Um, now, we didn't, I understand the intent of this legislation. Now, why can't we, for a code, for someone who's doing a code, on a code violation, because that's in deplorable condition and they're still renting it out, like we see on many occasions, so becomes, uh, property comes before the city council, why can we not find them an amount equal to what it costs us to service them, serve them administratively?
It's just, it's not something that's prohibited by ordinance. Now, clearly, the judge, when hearing the case, could take into consideration the amount of time officers have put in and increase the fine. You know, we've had people fined thousands of dollars before. So, that's something where it could be in the discretion of the prosecutor and the judge. Uh, clearly, if somebody works with you and agrees to solve the problem in environmental court historically, there's been no fine or the fines been lessened, but if somebody doesn't cooperate with you, the court tends to increase the fine. As in Imran Bora's multi-thousand-dollar fine he received.
We don't have anything, I know, uh, we amended it, but I don't think there's a motion to adopt this amended, there's nothing on the floor.
I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not...
No, sir.
At this point, let me just ask proponent, are you ready to move this forward, it's been amended twice?
Are there, are there any other ques, did you have another question?
I'm just wondering, what, what is the wordage as it stands presently? And the second question I have is, how many times has this occurred in the last two years?
When you say, first of all, the wording, what, what do you mean by that?
The wording is, did we amend it and then amend it again?
Yes. What you have in front of you...
I'm a bit confused on this.
Okay. What you have in front of you, the ordinance that in red says eleven-twenty-five-oh-two, that was the original amendment, then, uh, Alderman Gibson sponsored a amendment that changed where it was, uh, changed to out-of-county from out-of-state, y'all switched it back to out-of-state instead of out-of-count.
I thought, okay.
That's what the change is. Second one's, how many times has this happened?
How many times, how many times has this instance occurred, uh, where we needed to find the owner of a piece of property and, uh, uh, we couldn't find the owner of that piece of property in the last two years?
I would guess that it probably happens daily, if not, several times a week. Code could probably be better, but I'll tell you, some of the cases, we'll find a drug house, uh, they'll have a meth lab, you know, where these things can blow up and, you know, cause serious problems, and it'll take weeks to find the owner. And sometimes we...
If it occurs daily, how many times then in the last two years have we failed in our attempts to find the owner?
I don't know, but I'd have to defer to code, but normally, when it gets to litigation, which is...
Is Mr. Sykes here tonight?
But when it gets to litigation, we eventually find them, uh, but there have been two lawsuits, we filed a lawsuit, didn't know who owned it, and so we just had to run an ad in the paper. Many times when you have, uh, condemnations before you, we don't know who owns it. So, what we gotta do is run an ad in the paper and notify them the best we can.
I can't give you an exact number over the last two years, I can just tell you, numerous occasions, we have had problems finding the owner of properties.
But did we, I mean, but do you recall any time that we were unable to locate the owner?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, one, the, the most recent one was on Twentieth Street, where the house was condemned, and we finally got it tore down. But, I think someone brought it up earlier about contacting the, uh, the son of the owner, and he refused to tell us where he was at. I mean, eventually, we finally got to him, but it took a long time for, and neighbors were setting, or living next door to burn that house.
So, then we're basically then...
Hold on one second, Alderman, uh, again, we've been kinda rocking along in conversation, and, and, and there's nothing on the floor other than the thing that the, the legislation has amended.
I believe production has amended.
I'll second it. Go ahead, Charlie.
That's where I was after. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So, basically, then we're talking about two issues here, locating out-of-county or out-of-state owners. And two, getting people to register their, uh, house, uh, their property for a privileged license. Is that correct?
They already have to register it for a privileged license.
Okay.
This would make an out-of-state person, as amended, have to get an agent of service in Plaski County.
Okay.
In order to rent his property. That way, we can contact that person if we have any problems, if it burns, if there's a meth lab, if there's something's wrong.
Okay, and so then back to the numbers then that missed, that, uh, Mr. Gibson, Alderman Gibson explained earlier, we've got more people living out-of-county than we do out-of-state that own property in North Little Rock?
No.
You know, out of, out of, you got people, they live in Mayflower, they live in Conway, they live in McRae, they live in Bigelow, they live in Perry.
And we're not concerned about those, is that right? According to this amendment?
Well, I was.
I'm not.
He's not.
I mean, the ones that, two of the, one that lives in Conway and one that lives in Mayflower work in North Little Rock. I happen to know who they are, so, I mean, and y'all share the list with you.
How we gonna, what about the per, what about the owner that, uh, lives in the county, has a privileged license, but down the road moves out-of-state? How we gonna find that out?
Well, if something happens, we'll find it out, but he, but, you know, he's gonna do business in the city of North Little Rock, he should know, he should have an agent.
Registered once a year.
That's right, he's registered once a year.
Then it goes back to Alderman Dobbins, I'm, how we gonna enforce this?
How are we gonna enforce people speeding down the street? If you get caught, you get a ticket. If you don't get caught, you don't get a ticket.
Okay.
If you get caught doing this without your license, get a ticket.
I spoke.
Okay?
Now, Alderman, Alderman, right now, we have a motion to adopt this amended, Alderman Thomas.
I, I guess, I had two points. One, one, uh, I guess Sunday, uh, church, some of the people have been renting property for fifty years, said, you mean, we're gonna have, it's gonna change after fifty years. Now, we've had no problem with them, but I told them, well, recently, of course, we did adopt the fact that you gotta go down and register your property. And the second thing is, I, I don't make, uh, I don't want this to affect only of our people, but, uh, there was a, uh, officer outside of our county said he wouldn't like to admit he couldn't find the property owners.
Alderman Dobbins on the motion, we're still on the motion to adopt this amended.
On this amendment, and it, and it says any structure, so that means that trailers also, I'm just, wanna make sure that that, that people are aware of that, because we've, in, at least in Ward too, I know we've had some problems with, um, trailer park and making sure that it's properly cleaned up, and, and I think the, the owners of it aren't out-of-state, so I'm just throwing it out there that we mean to really continue to keep an eye on that, especially in the metal park area.
And they're supposed to have a privileged tax, though, so...
Right, and now, is that a privileged tax for, for one, if a trailer park, you have more than one trailer naturally, so it's one privilege tax for...
Yes.
The whole park rather than individual trailers?
No.
It's one, it's one privilege tax to rent, to rent property and then a dollar for each unit.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Well, we might consider raising that then.
Any further discussion on the motion to adopt this amended, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Adopted.
Next item?
Um, the emergency clause.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This will go into effect January first, so we need to vote on that. Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, ordinance oh-two-seventy-three, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, are we ready to read this one?
Yes, Mayor, I've passed out the match, which is the exhibit that shows the streets that they currently have within the cities, and the one that they're authorized to have a non-exclusive franchise on that's outside the city but could potentially be in the city someday.
Would you read it?
This is an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Pat and Taven Media and California Limited Partnership, DBA Charter of Communication, its successors or assigns to own and operate and maintain a cable system in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
I get a motion for adoption, then I ask amendment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, is there a second?
Second.
A motion made and seconded, and I'd like a motion to amend the legislation by the attachment of this document that was passed out as Exhibit A.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded on the motion to amend.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes. New production is amended.
Second. Uh, anything else, Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, the franchise fee will be four percent, just like all the other non-exclusive franchises.
All right, so, yes?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Now, some of those, some of this area does overlap.
Yes. What this does, it authorizes them to have a non-exclusive franchise in the streets that they currently already have them, and then we show areas outside the city, so if we are to annex there in the future, we don't have to re-adopt this, they will automatically be able to function in those areas.
Well, in all areas highlighted here, I wanna make sure that everyone's clear on that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, fine.
So that includes my annex, which was on the charter system, and the annex was nine years ago.
Yes.
So it's, it's not included in the, in the highlight area.
Yeah, the places that they have highlighted are ones that they've indicated to us that they currently have charter cable operations.
On the motion to adopt this amended?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Next item? Ordinance O-282, Alderman Height?
O-282, that's the L one, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we're gonna, we're gonna withdraw that one, pull it, and then we're gonna substitute.
I'd like to point out for the record that although the agenda reflects that Mayor Hayes sponsored that, it was Alderman Height. Next item?
Ordinance O-287, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, please read it.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-five-eight, sixty-five-nine, sixty-sixty, sixty-sixty-one, sixty-eight, fifty-one, seventy-one, forty-two, and seventy-four, sixty-nine, and adopting amended land use maps for the city of North Little Rock comprehensive land use plan.
I'm gonna hold it now, there, as you see on your agenda, that's a public hearing set for seven oh five, Mr. Wallace, you're gonna make a PowerPoint presentation, we're gonna have a lot of colors and a lot of maps, and so everybody hopefully will learn a lot about what we're trying to do. Next item, or let's go to new business.
Resolution O-2183, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it, and, and one eighty-four at the same time.
Uh, one eighty-three is the resolution reappointing William Cartwright to the Residential Housing Facilities Board, one eighty-four is a resolution reappointing Judy Waller to the Residential Housing Facilities Board.
Move for adoption. Thank you. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution O-2186, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, let me pass out a letter that I received from Chief Bradley, this is relative to suggested amendments, and let me explain it as I pass these out. If you have it, then, then, okay, well, you apparently do, that's what you call it, the vision secretary, does the press have a copy of these? The recommendation of Chief Bradley is that we do not take the low bidder, his letter explains why. Chief, let me go ahead and ask you to come to the microphone, and for the benefit of not only council members but the others, you want to mention that, and then, Mr. City Attorney, if there's anything that you think was prudent to do with regard to, you know, this, amending this legislation, please feel free to suggest it.
Chief, as I stated in my, in my letter, there were three vendors that bid the entire project, one of them that, that we quit considering very early on because the technology just wasn't, didn't meet our requirements, and was very young. There's two vendors that we did extensive analysis on, and of those two that you see mentioned in my communication there was MJ Communications and Leading Edge Technologies. Familiar with both of these companies, and the bottom line of why we chose the MJ Communications, which is, had actually a higher bid, primarily the reason is, is that we have to make a connection, we've got, I don't know, a million dollars plus worth of software running in the police department now that does our brokerage management, does our computer aided dispatch, but this component has to fit in with what we already have, and the proposal by MJ Communications, the technology that they're using, in fact, one of their, their partners in this project used to be partners with our current software vendor, and so their technology fits together very neatly. The other vendor had a problem in getting his technology to talk to our current software, and his solution involved bringing in another, a third-party software vendor to, to fill a void there, which then required that his part of the system communicate with this third-party vendor, which then communicates with our existing software, we're gonna, it's has not been done, the, our current software vendor, New World, said they thought they could do it and make it work, if I'm gonna spend three hundred and something thousand dollars, I didn't wanna think it would work, I want it to work, and, but they are confident that the, that the proposal, the technology, the solution offered by MJ will work, it is working in other police departments today, that's using the same software vendor, primary software vendor as we are, and I just feel, I know there's quite a bit of money difference here, but I just really felt a lot more comfortable selecting a known solution than one that was not known, and even though you might save a little bit of money, if it doesn't work efficiently after you spend the money, it wasn't money well spent, that's what's the thought processes that we have gone through.
All right, let me, before we go into, to any questions, Mr. City Attorney, you wanna help me frame an amendment?
Actually, Mayor, what I would probably recommend that what we do is, we look at adopting an ordinance defining professional services, maybe something we can do, you know, propose about the next meeting. Clearly, this is, you know, Mayor and Chief referred this as a bid, it's not a bid, this is a request for proposals, so bids where you go with the low dollar amount, proposals is where you seek the best proposal for what you're offering, I, what we are looking at on the quarry, those were proposals, not bids, which state law allows us to do, would like to do, Mayor, is, you know, you could go ahead and amend this and adopt it, but I'll take a look at our ordinances and see if we've had anything defining professional services, and if needed, I could come up with an amendment.
So you're saying that in your opinion, we could substitute the name of the vendor and the price that, that indicated in the, in the chief's letter and adopt it, and we would be appropriate?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go back and look at any ordinances if we can make, need to make some changes there, and if we do, I'll let y'all know.
All right, with that, then, and let me ask you this, Chief, 'cause I just got this shortly before we came to the council meeting too, you know, it seems to me you wanna insert three hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and eighty-nine cents, but then in your, in your proposal, you talk about integration with current system, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, where is that coming from?
That is actually the money that we have to spend with our current software vendor, which is New World Technologies, to provide the link, I did, if you also look over at Leading Edge, the, the cost of software with New World was ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, so I wanted to break it out to show exactly what we're buying from this vendor and what additional we'll have to buy to make sure it works properly.
Is this covered under the grant?
Yes.
The, the additional money, so the amount you want inserted is three forty-six, nine forty-eighty-nine?
That's correct, sir.
Uh, and the name of the company is MJ Communications, where appropriate in the legislation, I'd like to ask for an amendment to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, now we're in discussion, let's go ahead and amend it, and then we can discuss about it, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution O-2186, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, let me pass out a letter that I received from Chief Bradley, this is relative to suggested amendments, and let me explain it as I pass these out, uh, if you have it, then, then, okay, well, you apparently do, uh, that's what you call an efficient secretary, does the press have a copy of these? Uh, the, the recommendation of Chief Bradley is that we do not take the low bidder, his letter explains why, Chief, let me go ahead and ask you to come to the microphone, and for the benefit of not only council members but the others, you want to mention that, and then, Mr. City Attorney, if there's anything that you think was prudent to do with regard to, you know, this, amending this legislation, please feel free to suggest it.
Chief, as I stated in my, in my letter, there were three vendors that bid the entire project, one of them that, that we quit considering very early on because the technology just wasn't, didn't meet our requirements, and was very young, there's two vendors that we did extensive analysis on, and of those two that you see mentioned in my communication there was MJ Communications and Leading Edge Technologies, familiar with both of these companies, and the bottom line of why we chose the MJ Communications, which is, had actually a higher bid, primarily the reason is, is that we have to make a connection, we've got, I don't know, a million dollars plus worth of software running in the police department now that does our brokerage management, does our computer aided dispatch, but this component has to fit in with what we already have, and the proposal by MJ Communications, the technology that they're using, in fact, one of their, their partners in this project used to be partners with our current software vendor, and so their technology fits together very neatly. The other vendor had a problem in getting his technology to talk to our current software, and his solution involved bringing in another, a third-party software vendor to, to fill a void there, which then required that his part of the system communicate with this third-party vendor, which then communicates with our existing software, we're gonna, it's has not been done, the, our current software vendor, New World, said they thought they could do it and make it work, if I'm gonna spend three hundred and something thousand dollars, I didn't wanna think it would work, I want it to work, and, but they are confident that the, that the proposal, the technology, the solution offered by MJ will work, it is working in other police departments today, that's using the same software vendor, primary software vendor as we are, and I just feel, I know there's quite a bit of money difference here, but I just really felt a lot more comfortable selecting a known solution than one that was not known, and even though you might save a little bit of money, if it doesn't work efficiently after you spend the money, it wasn't money well spent, that's what's the thought processes that we have gone through.
All right, let me, before we go into, to any questions, Mr. City Attorney, you wanna help me frame an amendment?
Actually, Mayor, what I would probably recommend that what we do is, we look at adopting an ordinance defining professional services, maybe something we can do, you know, propose about the next meeting, clearly, this is, you know, Mayor and Chief referred this as a bid, it's not a bid, this is a request for proposals, so bids where you go with the low dollar amount, proposals is where you seek the best proposal for what you're offering, I, what we are looking at on the quarry, those were proposals, not bids, which state law allows us to do, would like to do, Mayor, is, you know, you could go ahead and amend this and adopt it, but I'll take a look at our ordinances and see if we've had anything defining professional services, and if needed, I could come up with an amendment.
So you're saying that in your opinion, we could substitute the name of the vendor and the price that, that indicated in the, in the chief's letter and adopt it, and we would be appropriate?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go back and look at any ordinances if we can make, need to make some changes there, and if we do, I'll let y'all know.
All right, with that, then, and let me ask you this, Chief, 'cause I just got this shortly before we came to the council meeting too, you know, it seems to me you wanna insert three hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and eighty-nine cents, but then in your, in your proposal, you talk about integration with current system, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, where is that coming from?
That is actually the money that we have to spend with our current software vendor, which is New World Technologies, to provide the link, I did, if you also look over at Leading Edge, the, the cost of software with New World was ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, so I wanted to break it out to show exactly what we're buying from this vendor and what additional we'll have to buy to make sure it works properly.
Is this covered under the grant?
Yes.
The, the additional money, so the amount you want inserted is three forty-six, nine forty-eighty-nine?
That's correct, sir.
Uh, and the name of the company is MJ Communications, where appropriate in the legislation, I'd like to ask for an amendment to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, now we're in discussion, let's go ahead and amend it, and then we can discuss about it, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
All right, let's get a motion to adopt this amended, and then we'll discuss.
So moved.
All right, discussion on the...
My, my question is just to Chief Bradley, it seems that in the Leading Edge, under their solution category, there's two hundred and some thousand dollars there, and that's excluded from the integration, which is ninety-six thousand, however, in MJ Communication, you're at three hundred and forty thousand, uh, this is kinda disturbing a little bit here, and that it seems that the solution, the way it's written, doesn't include the integration cost, it breaks it out for MJ for only thirty-six thousand, I'm finding that a little hard to believe, uh, and you, where they, first, let me back up, did they give you a live demonstration of what this software can do in both cases with MJ as well as Leading Edge?
Okay, all, all of this is not software, now, what, what this includes is a, a radio system, and then the software's part of it that actually allows our mobile units to speak to our mainframe unit, communicate back and forth, but the difference in, in the integration cost, and this is, in, in dealing between the vendors and our current software provider, this is what they, they have said, these are the components that we will have to buy to make that particular solution work.
Where's the overhead in there, somewhere, when you have thirty-six thousand dollars for integration with current system, I, I, it's my field, I know that's, that's pretty low unless you got somebody...
That's all, that's software, that's what I'm saying, the reason that one is low is because the solution that, that MJ is bidding an Avoltech software solution, Avoltech and New World at one time were partners, so their, their systems work together, now New World is trying to build their own software component that Avoltech does, and that's why it is a relatively inexpensive marriage of these two.
So this is only equipment, there's no consulting cost?
This includes the consulting cost, and, and...
In the solution portion of it?
No, now, part of it is, but, take Leading Edge Technologies, in their integration, there was like forty thousand dollars worth, if I recall correctly, forty thousand dollars of that was programming cost, because no solution, no, no integration, uh...
Right.
...solution exists, so they were gonna have to try to create it.
I understand that, and you're telling me that the integration cost for MJ, there's no programming cost, there is in some programmer, somewhere that has to go in, and this is not point and click, but actual snap-on, it, and it works.
It's already been done, it's working in other police departments.
So for our police department, there won't be any consulting, programming costs at all, thirty-six thousand dollars is for just the equipment?
Software, yes.
For the software?
Yes.
Someone has to load that software, who does that?
That's included, the installation of it is included with that.
Okay, I, I, I go a long way with you, but I'm just, I'm real cautious here, you know, I've worked in that department, so...
I understand.
I think that, I mean, is there a rush on this, I mean, I would like to see a little bit more on this, if, if it's a rush and you really feel comfortable about it, then that's fine, but I'm not very, very comfortable on it, when I start seeing a big disparity in integration costs being only thirty-six thousand, and this other guy, ninety-six thousand, and you have a solution from Leading Edge at two hundred thousand, but they have to go in with some software costs, which I believe is reasonable to always say, when you integrate something, someone has to download something, someone has to do something, and I don't think that, you know, a solution says, hey, here, here's a turnkey, you got it, here's the software, everything works, that, I mean, there's some test time in there, there's some burn-in time that has to take place, and I, and it's probably, probably was field tested at some other police department, you probably saw it, but did they tell you there was no customized software at all, there was no customizing for MJ?
The, our primary vendor, our primary software vendor, New World, says that we are working with Avoltech at this time at other police departments, we were at one time business partners, so we built our systems to work together, in fact, at one time, this component, Avoltech, was the business partner that supplied this for New World, New World has since started building their own, and that's the reason that they work well.
Okay, now, City Attorney, if this, if we agree to this, and, you know, low and behold, we find out that New World and MJ, the communications, the integration, it's costing more, what's the process there, do we go and just hold them, say this is all you're gonna get, or with some penalties, what happens next? Because I'm just not comfortable with this.
So you're saying if we enter into a contract with MJ and the configuration doesn't work?
Yes, and their professional services, the fees start to go up, and it starts to grow and grow and grow.
Then at that point in time, what we'd have to do is take a look at whatever contract and agreement we have with them, and look and, and, you know, hold them in breach under the agreement.
Help me out, Mr. Sisson, and Chief, if, if we went with this, you know, we don't pay them all the money until it's a working product, we, we change some of this, 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 this purchase price until we, it's then tested enough and working, is that not correct?
That's correct, and that'll be specified in the contract, and I might add that, what, what we're asking tonight is to be authorized to negotiate the contract, or, or for the mayor to be able to sign the contract, we can make sure those items are covered in the contract so that we do have recourse, and certainly we intended that anyway with any vendor, to make sure that, that we do cover in the contract all the work that's anticipated and the end result that we expect from it.
And, and that was part of the RFP to, originally, the original RFP that they made their, made their proposal on, is you, you told them what you expect to have happen, right?
We, we told them what we wanted, and we just, what the result is that we want, and we asked them to offer us a solution.
Makes, uh, City Attorney, one, what, here's my suggestion, 'cause probably when this thing comes back, and I won't be here, but one of the things we need to look out for anytime dealing with this type of situation here, is making sure that we have an out
But I'm not very, very comfortable on it. When I start seeing a big disparity in integration costs being only thirty-six thousand and this other guy ninety-six thousand, and you have a solution from a leading edge at two-hundred thousand, but they have to go in with some software costs, which I believe is reasonable to always say when you integrate something, someone has to download something, someone has to do something. And I don't think that, you know, a solution says, hey, here's a turnkey. You got it? Here's the software, everything works. That, I mean, there's some test time in there, there's some burn-in time that has to take place. And I, and it's probably, probably was field-tested at some other police department, you probably saw it, but did they tell you there's no customized software at all? There's no customizing for MJ?
The, our primary vendor, our primary software vendor, New World, says that we are working with Adeltec at this time at other police departments. We were at one time business partners, so we built our systems to work together. In fact, at one time, this component, Adeltec, was the business partner that supplied this for New World. New World has since started building their own, and that's the reason that they work well.
Okay. Now, City Attorney, if this, if we agree to this and, you know, low and behold, we find out that New World and MJ, the communications, the integration, it's costing more, what's the process there? Do we go and just hold them, say, this is all you're gonna get, or with some penalties? What happens next? Because I'm just not comfortable with this.
So, you're saying if we enter into a contract with MJ and the configuration doesn't work?
Yes, and their professional services fees start to go up, and it starts to grow and grow and grow.
Then at that point in time, what we'd have to do is take a look at whatever contract and agreement we have with them and look and, you know, hold them in breach under the agreement.
Help me out, Mr. Sisson, Chief. If, if we went with this, you know, we don't pay them all the money until it's a working product. We've changed some of this, 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 this purchase price until we, it's then tested enough and working, is that not correct?
That's correct, and that'll be specified in the contract. And I might add that what, what we're asking tonight is to be authorized to negotiate the contract, or, or for the mayor to be able to sign the contract. We can make sure those items are covered in the contract so that we do have recourse, and certainly we intended that anyway with any vendor, to make sure that, that we do cover in the contract all the work that's anticipated and the end result that we expect from it.
And, and that was part of the RFP to, originally, the original RFP that they made their, made their proposal on, is you told them what you expect to have happen, right?
We, we told them what we wanted, and we just, what the result is that we want, and we asked them to offer us a solution.
Make, uh, City Attorney, one, what, here's my suggestion, because probably when this thing comes back, and I won't be here, but one of the things we need to look out for anytime dealing with this type of, uh, situation here, is making sure that we have an out clause that whoever's doing performing the work, they have to, they have to pay us back money. Because, as well as some type of cost for us to go back and get some other bidder, because what's happening is, and I think critical services is, police departments' critical services, we have to have that online. You have to have communication. So, and especially when you have all these national security issues. But I think we need to make significant penalties all the way through this for non-performance and a date certain when things are, plus making sure we have at least a sixty to ninety day burn-in period where they have someone there that can make, if something goes wrong, we have somebody can correct it. Because I don't think we have that type of system analyst online here at the city. This is my suggestion. I'll, I'll think it's critical, we need it now. Is it a time crunch on this?
The only time crunch is that, that we're using the local law enforcement block grant money and, and three years' worth of it, and there's, uh, the year two thousand block grant must be expended before the end of this year. So, our plan was to get the contract written and make the down payment on this, pay, make partial payment on it.
Oliver Gibson?
Believe I, and I'm not sure this is not gonna take a change by ordinance of specifying what we can, within our, and I guess Paul can probably explain it to you, that we probably need to adopt an ordinance to specify this as being a professional service and therefore not requiring bid before we enter into a contract for it. That's number one.
Are you telling me you want me to hold this legislation in?
No, I think the key is, I think we could go ahead and adopt this to say this is who we've selected, and then we can come back and take a look at it, because I found out who they, uh, who they wanted y'all to select just for the meeting. We can see if this is, uh, professional services more in nature, then we need to go the route of defining professional services. If it's primarily you're buying a system, a product, then we need to do it by ordinance and, uh, go in and waive competitive bidding and use the RFP process.
Let me go ahead and then ask the council so, uh, to go ahead and, uh, and I'll call a roll on this, but then I'm gonna rely on our City Attorney and Chief and, uh, and the suggestions made by Alderman Dobbins as we go through this process to try to come up with both legislation and, and a, and a contract that we can execute in a way that will protect the city in the interest that it has.
Two other questions. It says on page two of this that the laptop computers be bought directly from Gateway?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a ballpark figure on that?
They, uh-
Just we're changing from, going from sixty units down to thirty.
Those, those units, uh, I believe were seventeen hundred dollars a piece, and I don't have that figure.
That's fine, that's fifty-one thousand. Okay. And in item three, this is a local match of a block grant, according to one of these pieces of paper. Have we made that, have we made that, that local match, or is it gonna be something that's on our two double three budget?
Those, those matches are made, and correct me, Mr. Sisson, I'm wrong, but those matches are made when the city council adopts or accepts the grant. And, uh, just like two council meetings ago, you accepted the two thousand two grant, made a local match of about eleven thousand dollars.
So, all three of the matches are done?
Yes.
Is that correct, Mr. Sisson?
You know, I'm sure it is, I didn't look at this, but we have, we normally do match, put it in a separate fund, so I'm sure that-
Okay, so we have an opportunity to fix it in the budget if we don't?
Yeah, but I'm sure it's all been done, I'm just nine-nine percent sure it has been done.
I just caught the, caught the teeth.
I gotta, gotta finish this out, but as, as far as any of the, when we get ready to write the contract, the specs for the laptops are going to, you're gonna have to scrutinize to make sure that they are sufficient to handle whatever the workload is?
Yes.
And what, and I would ask, I would just make the suggestion, make sure you get a durability clause in there for those laptops, because, you know, things drop, things happen, and they have to, they're an important part of the communication link, so.
Yes.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, resolution oh-two-one-eighty-seven, Alderman Vestal and Berry.
Call it, please.
It's a resolution appropriating ten thousand dollars from the blank fund to be deposited with Pulaski County Circuit Clerk to fund condemnation of properties for sewer and drainage easement and authorizing the city attorney to proceed with said condemnation.
Proceed option.
Second.
Is there an amendment?
Yeah, fill in the blank, uh, general fund.
Did I hear war three money?
General fund is the word I heard, is there a second?
For about a second.
All right, motion made, and seconded, any discussion on the motion to amend then the general fund?
Gibson?
Votes no.
Yildin?
I vote, this is just on the motion?
No, this is to amend it, to put the general, the word general fund in it.
I, I just wanted to explain, I vote.
I mean, we spend, we spend war, we spend war money for these projects ourselves.
We're in a vote, uh-
Alderman, after we, after we vote, I'll tell you exactly what, what the plan is, if you want-
I'll vote yes, I might not vote for the, for resolution, but I'll vote yes on the deal.
All right.
Just see what happens.
All right.
Dobbins?
Uh, uh, I'll vote yes for now.
Thomas?
I'll vote no for now.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
We're going majority.
Mayor, I'm gonna vote yes, because I've got a real, I've got a real interest in doing this now.
I think we all do that.
I change, I'd like to change my vote.
Well, let's change it, bud. Record him as a yes voter.
We've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, doing the same thing, we'll just come in and let you take out the general fund.
No, we got a-
No, we, we may, we may need to have six votes to do that.
We got a real-
Mayor, uh, we're, we're having a discussion.
We're having a discussion. Um, the, uh, aft, after the budget's approved, the ten thousand dollars will be replaced in the general fund from our drainage fund. Get your checkbook out. Current-
Currently, we, we're, I don't understand.
Well, not overspent, you don't even have to-
We're not, no.
You don't even have to do that.
You're condemning property, you're not gonna spend night, gotta put a deposit up.
Correct. This is.
Overspend your drainage fund.
Yeah.
No, we're not overspent.
No, no, no.
You have zero in left hand.
I'm gonna get it.
Okay.
All right, there's a, uh, is there a motion to adopt this amendment?
May I, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Gentlemen, I will tell you the word for it is, on a number of occasions, overspent its drainage fund into the next year, and it works.
It comes out of next year. It'll take, it'll take it off your next year's-
It'll just take it out next year.
You got money, you probably got projects signed off on it, hadn't been paid.
Yeah, and that's the other thing.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, face it, if, if, you know, that's a promise that we're gonna do this next year, but, uh, we've got a serious situation up in ours, and it's a lot more than ten thousand dollars, on the right of way up and down Iowa Wild Ditch, that they're requiring us to, or wanna require us to buy, and we just have not done a project yet. But, uh, if the city council wants to pay for those drainage easements, that could be wonderful.
Let me, let me, let me make this, this suggestion. Now, I, I might suggest that, you know, in keeping with some of our past practice and visiting with the finance director, where there's a small amount and the timing is, uh, is, is appropriate, you know, uh, if you wanna withdraw this, we'll work with you on the ten thousand dollars to be able to move forward if you need to.
Well, that's appropriate to me, I, it doesn't matter, that's fine, just long, just so long as we get the project off the ground. I withdraw legislation.
All right. Legislation withdrawn, next item?
Hey, Mayor, do you mind if I ask, so have y'all authorized me to file this lawsuit or not? Okay.
We have not.
Ordinance oh-two-ninety-two, Alderman Height?
Yeah, this doesn't cost anything, call it.
This is an order establishing a complaint procedure for citizen disturbed by the commercial pickup of garbage between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M., first reading.
Do we have a motion?
We'll suspend the rules placed on its second reading.
Thank you, seconded. On the motion?
Gibson?
Vote yes, and I got a question afterwards.
Yildin?
Vote yes, and I got a question.
Dobbins?
I'm just gonna vote yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An order's established a complaint procedure for citizen disturbed by the commercial pickup of garbage between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M., second reading.
Alderman Gibson?
The, uh, is that, is it, the current law is you can't pick it up after ten and before six, is that currently the law?
No. No, there's no law in the books now that restricts the length of the, uh, the times of day or night that, uh, Dipsey Dumpster Company, such a, I, uh, Waste Management or BFI can, can pick up. We had a discussion with them, uh, very reactionary, you know, there's a reaction. We talked to, uh, both, uh, general managers of both companies, and if we restrict the hours that they can service those Dipsey dumpsters, we're gonna cause, uh, similar to a domino theory, that a lot of things are gonna happen that are gonna be adverse, that are not gonna be positive in nature. One of the things that they both, both, uh, said right at the top of their list was, we would cause the, the rates or the charges or the cost of servicing dumpsters, uh, in not, and not only in just in residential neighborhoods, but in commercial neighborhoods also, or locations also to go up. Uh, it has to do with also accessibility in the landfills that they can take the dump, service the, uh, the trucks after, after filling them up, on and on and on. So, we, we've worked out a, uh, an arrangement with them that if we get, they've, uh, to back up just for a second, we've gotten some complaints from two or three areas in North Little Rock. We sit down with both companies that service dumpsters in those areas, and they have changed their schedules in all areas, uh, that we've received complaints, and I have not received a single phone call since they have, uh, changed their schedules, i.e. the, uh, behind Lakewood Village, uh, over behind Kroger, and then the other center, uh, behind the other center. They've changed, they've changed the times of day or night, uh, early morning that they service those dumpsters.
So, what this happens is, is that if someone gets disturbed between ten and six, then they file a complaint with code department. Code department should prepare a complaint form and forward that to somebody. Investigate it, and if, after fifteen days that they aren't resolved, we, we're sent a letter.
We can, uh, also, we, uh, we threaten that down the road, if, if we get complaints and they don't resolve that complaint, we'll go forward with legislation restricting them between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M.
No, you promised them.
They've promised us to also.
And you promised you'll go forward.
That's your other order, Alderman.
Well, let me finish up here, because we, we have an agreement, or had an agreement in regard to the dumpsters there at Wendy's and those areas along the other center. Those, those, those agreements, as far as I know, are still in place, that they will not pick them up after a certain time.
Did you have agreements with the current managers of those companies or previous managers?
I doubt we had with the current manager, but I thought it was a law that they couldn't do it.
There's no law, so, there's no law. There's no law. And by suppressing the, uh, the hours of day or night that they can pick up, we were gonna cause a lot of other problems that were gonna be more hazardous to the economy than, uh, than-
I don't understand what they would be, I mean, you've got, we, we gotta have a way, when we just got, we just finished rezoning some property up and down Camp Robinson Road that is adjacent to houses. And, and the people who did that, they met with the neighbors, and one of the things they said is that, you know, we will have our dumpsters picked up in the daytime, so they won't disturb you. But I thought it was already on the books that they couldn't pick them up after that, after a certain time at night, where they're adjacent to a residential area.
I'll defer to the city attorney, but, uh, it's, um, my understanding, we don't have one.
We have no noise ordinance that specifies time. We have, uh, general ordinance stating things are nuisance, and I think it's loud and un-
Bronches, brons-
Unnes, no, that's, uh, moving vehicles, loud and unnecessary noise or something like that, and we've always been reluctant to prosecute under that. If you clearly have a ordinance that spells it out, you know, I'd feel comfortable prosecuting it, but right now, we have nothing that's time-specific.
My question, did we, they do, need to do this as an ordinance, or did, should it have been, could it have been done as a resolution?
This can be done as a resolution or ordinance, I think Alderman Height wanted to do it as a resolution, make it a little more forceful, make it a requirement to where if these gentlemen don't live up to their agreements, y'all will be formally notified, and then y'all can come back and do whatever y'all want.
It does cost something to make an ordinance out of, excuse me, Mayor, can I have-
Yes, you've got the floor.
It does cost something to make an ordinance out of something that can be done administratively. Martin, how much, Martin, learn me on how much it costs to pass a law. How much does it cost?
Bob, what does it cost? Because we gotta print them.
It's about sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars, that's good. It's all it takes, it's all it costs?
Publication.
To, uh, publication of an ordinance? That's cheap.
All right, let's get back on-
Well, the res-
The items at hand, uh, I don't know that we've got any motion on the table, do we, this would be?
No, sir.
All right, I think we're, we're ready for a suspension of the rules if we're gonna go forward.
We suspend rules placing on whichever reading is made.
Motion made, seconded on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An order's establishing a complaint procedure for citizen disturbed by the commercial pickup of garbage between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M., third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yeah.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An order's establishing a complaint procedure for citizen disturbed by the commercial pickup of garbage between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M., third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An order's establishing a complaint procedure for citizen disturbed by the commercial pickup of garbage between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M., third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yeah.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Did absolutely not.
Mayor?
Set.
Because-
Let me, uh, Alderman, uh, Vestal has, has mentioned, and I think there was a question asked about the authorization to proceed, and, and, and I think that probably is, is a valid part, so will someone, uh, move that we reconsider, uh-
Move to reconsider?
We never voted on it.
Yeah, all right.
R O two-one-eighty-seven?
We never voted, I don't believe, but we-
Yeah, but we did, uh, we, it was withdrawn, so we got a-
It wasn't withdrawn, I don't-
We voted on the amendment.
It was amended then withdrawn.
His, your was withdrawn.
Yes.
Having, I mean, I, I can't-
I, I withdrew the legislation.
Yeah, uh, just that, there, unless there's an objection at the request of the sponsor, uh, uh, the legislation that was withdrawn will be now put back on the table.
But it's fine.
Uh, here ain't no objection, uh, uh, what's the resolution number, uh?
One-eighty-
One-eighty-seven.
Oh, oh-two-one-eighty-seven. You wanna give us, uh, you wanna wait, I'm sorry.
Um, I want to amend the legislation to where the blank line stated to say the Ward Three Drainage Fund.
Second. All right.
So we can proceed, please.
Motion made and seconded that the blank read the Ward Three Drainage Fund, uh, what reading? Why don't you read it, since it's back on the table?
Mayor, point of order, please. Okay, because this is a condemnation, and since he has withdrawn it, you know, I don't, my personal opinion is, while I'm not an attorney, you, you know, you cannot bring it back. One of the things we can do is we can pass it on a voice vote, and he can bring it back to the next session, and, you know, we can cover it during that session. You know, but it's a technical issue, but if there is in fact a condemnation, you do not have a valid condemnation.
There is, there's nothing that's-
Since you aren't, since, since our city attorney is an attorney, well, that's, that's him.
Okay, I have no, I do this all the time, let's- I have no problem with this being adopted tonight and us proceeding with condemnation. There's no requirement of necessarily vote or anything, this is something that we want to bring forward, the council to authorize condemnation. I have no problem with this.
All right, it's based on our city attorney, Mr. Alderman.
And remember, Alderman, if there is a problem, we can come back and fix it, because the land's not moving anywhere.
Okay.
All right, with that, uh, the amendment, I think, is before us, if I'm not mistaken, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An order's establishing a complaint procedure for citizen disturbed by the commercial pickup of garbage between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M., third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yeah.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On emergency-
I have no problem with this being adopted tonight and us proceeding with condemnation. There's no requirement of necessarily vote or anything, this is something that we want to bring forward, the council to authorize condemnation. I have no problem with this.
All right, it's based on our city attorney, Mr. Alderman.
And remember, Alderman, if there is a problem, we can come back and fix it, because
And I'm about to get tired of it. Uh, there was, uh, a dog that's seening, there was, there was, uh, put in shelter that had been there for three weeks, the people had been calling, and it was not me. Billy Grace went out there to see him and put that dog in shelter, be upset. But a while back, I come up here and talk to y'all, and you told me to talk to Billy Grace. Billy Grace stood right over there and told me that, Bobby, he said, I've done all I can do. So that's when you told me to talk to Paul Sesky, and we filed this, and I went to court. And this is what is embarrassing and this downright disgusting, and I don't appreciate it a bit from what the animal code man said. When the woman asked him about the incident out there, he, she asked him about the holes in the yard, he never did look at the judge, he just had his head down, because I was standing right there beside him, and he asked him about the holes, and he just shook his head and said, no, I didn't see no hole. He asked him about the smell, and he said, no, he said, I didn't see, didn't, didn't smell nothing. And he said, no, I didn't hear no barking. And then, uh, the lady asked him, how would he sum this up? And he said, excellent, excellent, twice. I didn't have a leg to stand on, even though I went ahead and told the judge what happened, and he told me that I hadn't proven my case because there was conflict and testimony. So, I went outside and I told him, he come out there and, uh, started talking to me, and he said he was fixing to go talk to the owner and see if he would consent to putting shock collars on him. I told him I didn't give a damn, what he went and done after what he done to me in there, because I didn't appreciate it, and I was gonna talk to y'all about it, so. This is the only thing I know to do, is, uh, come to y'all and see if y'all can come up with some kind of solution. But if you don't, I'm gonna be here ever, council meeting, to reserve a spot here, just to address the council and say hello, and ask y'all if y'all have come up with a solution of these barking stinking dogs. And then I'm gonna go sit down, but I'm gonna tell everybody that I see about this, and it's gonna be left up to y'all. I've asked you for help, and I'm still asking you for help. We've got dogs that run in Rose City, there was one that's seening, he's a, uh, a rock wilder, he ain't got no collar on him, and he ain't got nobody with him, and there's also a red chow. And, uh, if they can't take care of these problems like I got, I'm gonna give them some, some more problems to, to allow. Thank you, sir.
Microphone's open.
I'm Joe Reynolds, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment, I'm still, uh, trying to work with several people on this annexation you did to me, and took my mayor's job away from me out there, so. But anyway, uh, I understand we have a court date now, February the twentieth, and, uh, we started in June, we're finally gonna get to court in February, so, and I've been asking for no truck signs out there for a long time, I've talked to, uh, my Alderman about it, I've talked to Brother Marvin about it, and I've talked to several people about it, and, uh, I still don't have a truck sign out there, and I'm gonna be like this guy over here, only I'm gonna get more vocal as I go along, probably, if we can't get something taken care of out there. And I know you, you annexed me, the planning commission approved a zoning plan, the council approved that zoning plan, so I've been annexed, I've been zoned, and I still don't have any no truck signs out there, and I've got one truck sign out there in one place that's been out there twenty years, and I keep hearing that nobody can enforce it. We've got a grandfather clause about businesses, I think we've got a pop-pop clause about signs, too. So, you know, I, I'm still having problems out here with these, with these trucks, and, uh, I'm not, it don't appear as to make it, I'm not getting anywhere. So are we gonna get somewhere, or?
I'm gonna ask the city attorney to look at that, uh, Mr. Reynolds, uh, you know, there is a, is a business out there that, uh, is, is only has one way out of their operation, I'm told. Mr. Marvin, I've sent out there on at least one, maybe more occasions, and, uh, and that business is gonna be relocating in the spring. Uh, this could be considered a taking if we don't provide that, if we, if we enforce a rule or, or, or an ordinance of this city, uh, that, that's not, uh, taking into consideration the preexistence of that business, uh, and, uh, and so before, uh, I ask them to go out and put out signs, I'm just finding this out within the last several weeks. Uh, Alderman Berry, uh, did discuss this with me and asked me to try to, uh, ensure that signs were put out there, Mr. Marvin went out there in response to that, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to look at it and see if, uh, if what our legal position is with regard to the difficulties that business might be under, and since it was operating prior to our annexation, what kind of legal responsibilities we might have if we tried to enforce that, uh, in terms of taking, some kind of taking of, of their property without, uh, without just compensation.
Well, in the beginning, there's two ways to get in, huh?
Excuse me, just a second, sir. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mayor, this morning, uh, Tim Marvin and I did meet, we discussed this, and so my staff's gonna take a look at it, if you can effectively force the non-conformant use to shut down through traffic regulations, and that's something we're gonna take a look at.
Well, in the beginning, there's two ways to get in. There's a loop, you get in and out, and, uh, since I'm not gonna be meeting with them, don't sound like, and I haven't been with them when they came out and looked at the area, and, uh, some of the information that, that I know about, maybe they don't have, but, I'd say there's two ways in.
Well, I understand that, and Mr. Marvin talked to the, it's the trucks that come in and, and, and the inability to back up. Now, I haven't been out there, but I sure have Mr. Marvin go out there with you, and if, uh, if, if there is a difference of opinion in terms of the hardship, uh, or and or the legal ability that we have, then fine, we'll, we'll try to rectify that, but that's, you know, that's certainly not due to Mr. Berry's inability, it's due to me and, and, and discussing this with Mr. Marvin and trying to decide what's prudent and what's responsible in terms of the operation of that business.
Well, I've talked to Mr. Marvin, and, uh, I've indicated to him, he told me there were two options, I told him there's three options, so if he and I wants to talk again, that's fine, we work out something, I don't have any problem with it, but there is a way to do it. He relocated the interest to his property, and he loads all of his trucks on the street. And as a taxpayer, I don't think I should be providing him a place to do his business. He don't come on his own property to do the business, he parks the, the car haulers that haul nine cars on the street, he loads all of his cars on the street, incoming and outgoing, and he never, he never does anything on his own property. Now, I don't know what the ordinances are for, I know that I used to be in the freight business, and I, when I delivered freight, I was expected to be there a very short time and get out of there, same way with UPS, FedEx, and everybody else, but this guy can come down here and park a truck where a, uh, on the street where a big fire truck couldn't get through there for three and four hours at a time. So we got a serious, we got a problem out there, in my opinion, and, uh, I try to deal with him, and he don't even wanna, the kind of dealing he wants to do with me, uh, he don't want me to talk about it here, so we do have a situation that can be remedied,